Good evening. I'd like to adjourn the Board of Education closed session at 7:05 and re-convene the Board of Education open session at 7:15. Before we start, I'd like to open tonight's meeting welcoming Austin Skalski to the Monrovia Unified School District family. Austin was born on Saturday, May the 19th, to the Clifton Middle School English teacher, Ms. Ashley Skalski. Let's give her a hand, come on guys. And as a parent of four, I would like to pray for her right now and may the force be with her. Secondly, I'd like, and I'm excited about this, I'd like to welcome back our own Mr. Rob Hammond. I know Mr. Hammond very well, so I will probably get beat up after this, but I want to conclude by saying I'm going to continue anyway. But no, sincerely, Rob did something that actually, I thought he was crazy, but it would behoove me not to recognize his efforts. If you didn't know, Mr. Hammond started in San Diego, California, and drove his bicycle all the way to Florida. That's the conclusion right there with the sandy feet. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hammond, very white feet. I would give anything to beat a fly on his back going through those different cities, especially the great state of Texas, I had to throw that in there, I'm sorry. But sincerely, Rob, it is, I call it awesomeness, what you did, Mr. Hammond, and, you know, I want to put you on the spot by asking you to say a few words, and we'll fight later, sir.
What I'm really happy about is that I returned home safely. I'd like to thank everybody who prayed for my safety. It was 43 grueling days crossing the United States on a bicycle. It's an experience of a lifetime. More importantly, I'd like to thank everybody who contributed to I Ride For You, which benefited the PTAs here in the Monrovia Unified School District. We were able to raise a significant amount of money that will go towards field trips for our students. And I'd like to thank the ladies who helped me out on that, Olivia, Maritza, and Gail, who were all the folks behind the scenes getting that all done, all the PTA presidents that talked to their membership. It's a very moving experience. It's good to be home.
To lose a few pounds, may I suggest a walk around Monrovia? I'm having too much fun, but I'm just really happy for my friend, I just thought that was something that was outstanding and amazing. And all my friends in Texas and all over the United States, I told everybody, Rob, because I thought it was awesome, so forgive me as I continue to be excited for the likes of Rob Hammond. And so with that said, I was just going to give one more hand and then I'll move forward. Next, I'd like to welcome the wonderful school of Plymouth Elementary to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, Board members and district leaders and guests. It's my honor to serve as the principal of Plymouth Elementary School, I'm Greg Giraud, and Plymouth also has the privilege of hosting our district's English TK program, and so with us this evening to lead us in our pledge of allegiance are several of our current and I think a couple former TK students, led by our amazing teacher, Ms. Shannon Varner, former Teacher of the Year, a big round of applause for Ms. Varner. And so I want to make sure I get this right, so with us tonight Emiliano Jacobo, you raise your hand? All right. Noah Perez, Juan Carlos Valle Rios, Samantha Valle Rios, former TK student, big sister, Alexander Vergara, Nathan Vergara, Jonathan Fernandez, a former TK student, and Henry M. All right, it's your, you guys take it away.
Have you concluded yet? You haven't concluded yet? We want to take pictures with these guys.
You are going to switch the public comments to the board?
Yes.
Most kids have the same attention span I do.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you can see by our roll called Board Member Rich is excused, as well as Dr. Darvin Jackson, regarding the report in our closed session held to this date, we will address that later on the agenda. We're at Item G, Order of Business. The Board Agenda discusses presentation items which could include input from representatives of matters maybe moved up the agenda. Dr. Terosian?
Mr. President, we have one item that was inadvertently moved up on the agenda and needs to go into its regular location, and it is Public Comments H, which would follow I, the report from the Superintendent. So it would directly precede informational reports.
So noted and received. Approve the minutes of the Regular Board of Education dated May 19th. Forgive me, May 9th, 2018. May I entertain a motion?
It's on move. Second.
Ms. Huff?
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Stain.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you, Ms. Huff. Right now, we'd like to recognize in a lot of our communication with regards to the Board of Education, thanking those individuals. I don't want to take the thunder away from Dr. Terosian, so I'll move forward with Chief Mick in this wonderful presentation.
Thank you, President Williams, members of the Board. Next to us today on the dais are two student Board members, and that seldom occurs, but this is the last Board meeting of the year that they will be attending. They are welcome to continue to attend when school is out, and we'll keep their plates available for them. But we have with us Amy Gonzalez from Canyon Oaks High School and Marissa Zubiate from Monrovia High School. Both have done an extraordinary job representing our schools and their classmates. They have provided comprehensive information, accurate information, and kept the Board and the community apprised of the wonderful things going on at each of their schools. And I am proud to say that they will be graduates of the Monrovia Unified School District on June 6th. We also have two certificates suitable for framing that I'd like to present to them so that we can indeed take the photo off for their last Board meeting.
Let's go, ladies.
We also have two members of the administration of both Monrovia High School and Canyon Oaks who would like to say a couple of words on behalf of both of these students, Mr. McGinnis and Mr. McKendrick.
That's what you call being the center of attention, right? We're all going to talk about them right in front of you. So Marissa is a high school senior at Monrovia High School, and we are so privileged to have had the opportunity to work with her. She didn't begin her work in student leadership just at the high school. In fact, she, when at Santa Fe, she was a budding leader then, and she has just done nothing but impressed us on our campus. She's calm, she's focused, she's engaging in all the context on our campus, she has her finger on the pulse of what's happening, and I can't think of a more appropriate representative that we would have for our high school here, representing our student leadership and our entire campus. So Marissa, thank you on behalf of our school and also on the, from the Monrovia School Board of Education for serving as a student representative for the Board of Education. Congratulations.
Amy Gonzalez is a superstar. At a very young age, she demonstrated her ability to be a leader and to get the job done. What job? Any job. A little bit about Amy, she's worked in the food industry, restaurant industry, for a little over a year now, and she's been here as our student representative for two years, which is a record for us, which is something very new, and I don't know if it will ever be replicated. On top of all that, she has already completed all the requirements to graduate before even turning seventeen and a half. Again, we've known her for a long time as she's here, and she's known how well she's worked over at the Monrovia Community Adult School, and in this process shown a level of maturity way beyond her age, and yet despite the workload that she's taken on, she never complained. She's always been a faithful friend and had expressed a fierce loyalty towards her family, and has been a model citizen in the Monrovia community. She's not only hardworking, she always goes the extra mile, including earning 235 credits instead of just the minimum requirement of 220 credits to graduate, like I said earlier, and always performs every task with a smile. It's hard to picture Amy without a smile. She's trying to hide it right now, but she can't. And throughout all this, she makes it look easy, but it hasn't been easy. She's gone through trials and had her triumphs, and has consistently through all of this been resilient, confident, humble, strong, helpful, powerful, courageous, graceful, optimistic, charismatic, genuine, loving, oh, it's not over, I'm still going here. Kind, cheerful, and generous. She does it all. Words cannot describe what a privilege it has been to work and know and learn from Amy Gonzalez. She is truly an angel, and to some even a guardian angel. Her plans for next year are set, and we expect her to be the recipient of many, many scholarships in the next couple of weeks at our graduation ceremony. And a couple of comments we got from our staff members today when we were remembering her, Mr. Edwards said she's the greatest mathlete ever, and Ms. Sanchez actually wrote a little thing for her using the letters in her name. Okay, so A for admirable, M for mindful of others, Y for youthful, G for great communicator, O for outstanding, N for noble, Z for zestful, A for awesome, L for likable, E for extraordinary, and S for sensational. Thank you, Amy.
Hey, they're still up here for a little bit. Oh, yeah. Your last straw. Darvin. Oh, sorry, Sue.
Had to give an extra thank you to Marissa. She was my son's dance partner at the special lead prom. What patience do you have, my friend?
A lot.
See you in a week. Okay. The Board wishes to honor those Monrovia Unified School District employees who have retired, will be retiring this year. Dr. Kaiser will lead us in this effort.
Thank you, President Williams, Board and Cabinet and Community. I have the honor of presenting our retirees to you this evening. They say that it takes a village to raise a child. In Monrovia, it takes great families, a tight neighborhood, and a fantastic school district. We have six members of our tribe that have contributed beyond measure, and these people, there are six people that have contributed 123 years collectively. That's between 10 and 28 years. Not only have they touched the lives of many, many children in this district, they have touched the lives of Board members, of staff, of classified staff, and teaching staff, and administrators. They are very special people. So it is bittersweet that we celebrate their retirement, saying goodbye, and then at the same time wishing them a very wonderful next chapter in life. I'm going to have three of our administrators come and pay some tribute to our people, and we're going to start with Mrs. Jennifer Jackson from Clifton, who has two of these very special retirees.
Good evening, Board of Education, District Administration, and Monrovia Community. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to honor two very special people. I'm going to start with our math teacher, Becky Aradondo, and our Assistant Principal Courtney Glass is going to continue with our fabulous nurse, Ginger Logston. So Becky, come join me. Don't say no, get up here. This is my favorite part, I get to hold on to her and I'm taller. It's really exciting. This doesn't happen often in my life. Becky is retiring after 38 years of service in education. She joined the Clifton team 12 years ago after spending 26 years teaching with the archdiocese. She has taught all grade levels at Clifton and served in many capacities as our math department chair, PBIS team member, instructional leadership team member, team member, team member, team member, the list goes on and on. There are so many stories that I can share about Becky, but I'm going to spread them out over the course of all of our celebrations that are yet to come for the sake of time tonight. But to begin, I personally look at Becky as a mother figure, and don't get upset about your age, just settle down. She really is a mother and a grandmother, and this explains her relentless desire to make sure every child learns and behaves. She's personally impacted whether, she's personally impacted when either of those things don't happen. And I will tell you, we've had a lot of conversations about that in the seven years that we've worked together. Although we've had our fair share of times where we disagree, she's willing to have open and honest conversations to address her concerns, and she loves to start off a lot of conversations with myself and Mr. Glass with, "Don't be offended, butt." From my perspective, I've been able to rely on her many times, and this is something that administrators truly need in their team members. When I asked colleagues to say a few words about Becky, this is what they shared. She's kind-hearted, compassionate, and has a sense of humor. Becky is someone that has not only touched her students' lives, but she has touched my life in time, and I've been lucky enough to teach with her. She's always there when you need her with words of encouragement or a hug when you need it. There are not enough words to thank Becky for everything she has done. She's been a mentor, she's been an amazing example of the work that it takes to be an amazing teacher, and she has been and will continue to be an amazing friend. June 7th will be a bittersweet day for me because of Becky's retirement. She's a trusted colleague, another female voice in the math department, mentor and friend. Becky is a wealth of knowledge due to her vast teaching experience in math. We have bonded over ratios, fractions, geometry, statistics, and our love of soap operas. Marilyn Smith, those are your words. I can always trust that she will speak her mind and we will have a good time due to her quick wit and infectious laugh. She was a math major in college at a time where that was not the norm for women. Her favorite pastime is Happy Hours. She knows where to go. This is where we get real. And Las Vegas, people know her by first name. She is hardworking, a no-nonsense woman, and a fierce advocate for what is best for kids. She is generous with her hospitality both on and off of campus. My personal adjectives to describe Becky would be honest, driven, feisty, loving, dedicated, loyal, courageous, and tenacious. Becky, you will be missed on the Clifton team more than you know as you start spending more time in your other home of Las Vegas. Never forget the impact you have made on the students throughout your career. We love you, and tonight we honor you for your tireless dedication to teaching.
Thank you.
Take center stage, your turn.
And now Courtney Glass.
I have the pleasure of inviting up somebody who I thought we'd already said goodbye to, but I guess we'll bring you back up. Come on up here, Ms. Ginger. Our fantastic nurse, former, because she actually said goodbye to us in December, so she's already living the dream, so to speak. I had the pleasure of working with Ginger for seven and a half years at Clifton as she dealt with the scraped knees and the stomach aches and headaches after, conveniently at the end of snack and lunches when they all managed to get those, but they never stayed long, they either figured out that they were real true aches and pains, or they were sent back to class, as Ms. Ginger didn't put up with that. So as I said, we already did, we celebrated Ms. Ginger in December, we said goodbye to her, it took us a few months to finally just get someone to be there. We'll never replace her, but we did finally get someone to be there, at least in the office, and she was there early on to help train and help transition not only the interim nurses along the way, but the new nurse as well. And so it is with pleasure that I say goodbye again, Ms. Ginger, as you sail off into the sunset. However, anytime she comes by, if you ever happen to see her, she does live in town. Lemon poppy seed cake, highly recommend it, highly recommend it, really for the frosting probably more than anything, but it's pretty darn good. So Ms. Ginger, thank you very much for what you did for Clifton, for the kids, for the families, and for the staff as well.
Thank you. Next, we will have Mr. David Conway come and present our retiree, Diana Lee.
Well, school board, administration, and community members, and MUSD team members?
Hi.
Good to see you again. Diana worked here- Diana worked here for over 28 years in the Monrovia School District, in the Business Services Department, and I worked with her for almost 20 of those years. And she, along with Linda Dempsey, taught me everything I know about school accounting. So the things that are going well are all thanks to Diana. And the things that aren't going well are because she's not here anymore. Everyone at MUSD could always count on Diana to help out in whatever was needed. She was always there for the rest of the staff, for our team here, for anybody at the school site that did anything. She was somebody who could always come up with whatever was needed and was always willing to do so. And no matter how busy she was, she would always help. And she was one of the busiest people that I've ever seen. She cranked out so much work in that department. And every time I thought that she couldn't do any more, I would give her more work anyway. And she would always get it done quickly and get it done accurately, and it was just amazing to watch her work. We miss you a lot. And the whole department misses her, I mean, just not for the great work, but because she was always a pleasure to work with. She was always, always happy, always helping out the other team members. She was quite a mentor to the entire group over there. And I know that the rest of the department, most of them, all of them would say that most of what they know about school accounting is also because of Diana. I'm trying to lure her back out of retirement. For some reason, she prefers spending time with her grandkids and her family to working here. I don't quite understand that, but we'll keep trying. And Diana, I just wanted to say we miss you so much.
Thank you.
And you're welcome back anytime.
Okay.
And from the entire Monrovia family, congratulations and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
And next, we have Mr. Charles Provokan, who will speak on behalf of Tito Moraga.
Well, Tito's been here for 28 years, and I only had him for a year and a half, which I could have had him for more. Tito was that person who basically kept it real, no nonsense, and he would just lay it straight. And sometimes you need that in an employee, just to make sure that whatever you're doing, you're doing for the right things and for the right cause. And you could tell that he really had the Monrovia community and the students at heart. Even outside of work hours, I can remember this one time where I had to go to Plymouth Elementary at like 9:00 PM, and I didn't know what the alarm was. And as the alarm was going off, Tito was more than willing to just rush to Plymouth and help me out, even at 9:00 PM. I told him not to, basically closed my eyes, and he guided me to the alarm panel with ease, and I was able to turn off the alarm. And luckily, no cops came with guns on me. All thanks to Tito. I mean, his presence is still missed. There's a lot of historical knowledge that I know that some of the other guys, I think they call you because they have magical answers for me when I need to know where certain things are. You were a great asset, and thank you for all your years of service.
And I would like to present our last two retirees of the evening, Mrs. Christina Lizardo and Mrs. Julia Clegg. Julia. Julia. You know what comes to mind when I think of Julia? The Proverbs 31 woman.
Sweet Sue.
Truly. And Julia has worked in our office for many years. She's been working diligently for many years, keeping control of Mr. Patrick Garcia, our director of fine arts. And so there are some words that come to mind as I think of Julia. She's cheerful, gentle, graceful, joyful, and very efficient. Julia has worked 21 years for the Monrovia Unified School District, and most recently, Julia has served as the assistant to our fine arts director, Patrick Garcia. Her duties have run the gamut, far beyond typing, filing, and answering phones. Right? She has organized performances and events, and has been the best event planner ever. You can see Julia frequently at 9:00 at night, running around, working up a sweat, working hard, when nobody really notices because it's that behind-the-scenes work that she does. As you go on to your next chapter with your sweet husband, Al, I know you will be going beyond the call of duty, organizing your future events with him as you enjoy your retirement. Julia, thank you so much for your years of service here.
Thank you, Sue. Thanks so much. Congrats, Sue. Thank you.
And next, Christine Lizardo. I guess Christine is not here. Whoops. We thought that Christine was here. I'm going to tell you about Christine, because she was sort of the face of our district out there in the district office. Christina Lizardo worked for the Monrovia Unified School District for 10 years in human resources as a clerical assistant one, helping with students and staff records. Chris was also very helpful subbing in other MUSD departments when she was needed. You can see her out in the warehouse, you could see her in the special ed department, and frequently at our front desk. Over the years, Chris subbed in the special education department, the superintendent's department, and in the business services department. Chris is an outstanding member of the Monrovia Unified School District team, and she will be very much missed by all of us. Christine Lizardo, so we can clap for her even though she's not here. These are our retirees.
Ladies and gentlemen, we do have a brief reception outside for those who have retired, but we just want to make some quick reports, which includes the board. I'll ask Mr. Gittelland to lead us in that effort.
Yeah, I just want to give a shout out to all the staff, the faculty, the students, the parents that worked so hard to make Monrovia Days such a success. This year was a terrific, terrific Monrovia Days. If you missed it, you really missed a good party. And there are a huge number of people from the district that worked very hard to make that successful, and to go out there and see our students with their robots, the bands marching, and all the good things that the school was able to show at the Monrovia Days. I just thank all of you that were involved.
And to piggyback what Mr. Gittelland just articulated, from my understanding, this was the best ever, based on the city report. The parade was wonderful. It was a lot of greetings on behalf of Mr. Hammond. We had a lot of signs, and that was pretty cool. Center stage, the VCSG-V, which is the Volunteer Center of San Diego Valley, of course, the Monrovia Unified School District, and as Mr. Gittelland just acknowledged, the staff, the sponsors, of course, the businesses, and a big thank you to all of you. It was tremendous. I saw my son, and he's a senior this year, so he's going to be gone, but he's a special need kid, and just a lot of things I never thought would come. And so I'm really blessed to see him in this fashion, being inclusive. And let me stop there, because this is just tough when you see your kid that you never thought that would be in certain areas, to be in this capacity. So with that, I'd like to make a brief recess, as I mentioned, so we can celebrate those. Forgive me, I do want to bring the board. Like I said, I got emotional here, talking about Sam. So Marissa, we got to talk after this. But... Yeah. Yeah, so let me stop now, because if you've got a kid, you know what I'm talking about, so let me just stop right now. Dr. Terossian, will you lead us with your report, please?
I will yield my time to the student board member, Amy.
Good evening, board members, district office administrators, parents, students, and members of our community. It is with mixed emotions that I share my last board report for the alternative schools with you this evening. Canyon and Mountains College growing culture continues to be in full force. The last field trip we held as a school was to the Pasadena City College, where hundreds of high school students gathered to attend a very informative college fair. It was amazing. Students were thrilled with the amount of opportunities to learn more about their post-secondary options. There were literally hundreds of colleges represented, and our students spent half of the day touring the college booths at the convention with our counselors. Thursday morning, students will also be going with Mrs. Denai to a water sanitation plant to learn firsthand the science of sterilizing sewage water. This Thursday evening, we will be going to the Pasadena Playhouse with Mr. Chacon and his wife to see a satire on local culture. Lastly, we are making our last preparations for graduation day. We invite all to join us at the community center on Tuesday, June 5th, at 6:00 PM, to celebrate this momentous event with us. On behalf of Canyon Oaks High School and Mountain Park School, I would like to wish our graduating seniors all the best of luck in the future endeavors, and to the rest of the Monrovia community a safe and productive summer. On behalf of the graduating class of 2018, thank you all for your unconditional support of our schools. Thank you. And lastly, I would just like to thank the board for allowing me to be part of the board for two years now. It's been a privilege to be a part of this district since I was in preschool, so I'm going to take all my experience here with my education into my future, and I just want to give a big thank you to all the staff and my teachers also. So that's it.
I didn't really come with the report today, but I can leave off with this. So next Thursday, our Wildcats will be checking out, our seniors will be checking out next Thursday on the 31st. That is also our grad night, and then on June 6th is our graduation. I wish them all best of luck, my class, myself included. And I just want to say thank you to the board. It really has been a pleasure to be on here, quite an experience, to be honest. I've enjoyed it, so thank you so much. I really do feel blessed to have this opportunity, so thank you.
Mr. Wong?
Really quick, I just wanted to make sure that we recognize our CIF baseball march to another pennant coming up. We got past the second round with an 11-0 blowout, and Friday is our next game in West Covina. I can't remember where. Northview. See, it's good to know everybody's on top of things here. So hopefully, we'll get another big crowd. You know, one thing about Monrovia is, we travel better than any other school in the country.
Yep.
So hopefully, we'll all be out there for our next victory.
That's awesome. Thank you, Mr. Wong. Dr. Terossian?
Thank you, President Williams, members of the board. I'd like to simply recognize the three great performances we were able to witness in the last couple of weeks. The first was a Midsummer Night's Dream at Clifton. The next is Jungle Book at Wild Rose. And if you're here, then you didn't make it to dinner and the show today over there, but there are two more opportunities later this week. And Hairspray Junior at Santa Fe Middle School. All three were outstanding productions and really a tribute to the great work done in our schools. I'd also like to remind the community about a blood drive in honor of James Baranta. It's for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. It'll be at Clifton Middle School in the gym on Saturday, June 2nd, from 8:00 to 3:00. Please join us there. And before we recess, I would like to introduce the newest member of our district, and I'm going to ask Mr. McGinnis to help me introduce our new coach for the basketball team of the Monrovia High School. He comes so well-regarded, and it is such a delight to meet him.
Thank you very much. And I realize that we are the two that's standing in between us and a break and a bite of cake, so... But it is with great honor that we welcome a new Wildcat to our campus. This is Coach Sheik Morris, Samuel Morris. He's often known, he's well-known in our community. He's, he and his family are longtime partners in our, and their students are in our schools. And he has been, he's been coaching both high school and youth teams, and he comes to us with a great passion about basketball, a wealth of knowledge, and more importantly, a great connection to student athletes. So we look forward to seeing him in the gym, making connections with our kids, and leading our teams to victory. So please help me welcome Coach Samuel Morris.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Thank you, board, administrative staff here at MUSD for the opportunity that's given to me. I'd like to thank my family, my wonderful wife, and my two children, who have stood by me through all of this basketball journey. I know there's a lot of time where I'm gone and I'm doing a lot of basketball-type things, but I'm sorry to give you the bad news, it's going to be a lot more. I have a lot of work to do here. I'm very excited about this opportunity. There were other offers and things for me to go, but I'm so glad that you stood with me in faith on things that I wanted to do by making something happen here in my own community. I'm very excited about this opportunity. I'm so thankful. It's just a blessing. With the children that we have here, from youth all the way into high school, it's been my goal, not just to be a basketball coach, but to also help them in their endeavors moving forward into college, whether they do it on the academic side or they do it athletically. That's been my mission, and that's just been my goal in order to give back. And I'm just thankful that MUSD has granted me that opportunity to do that here in my own community.
Where's your family, Coach? I'd like to see him standing up.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
There goes the filming, I'm sorry. Now we'll have our recess unless there's any other additions like that, Mr. McGinnis?
Oh, I'm looking forward to seeing all of your faces in our gym, at our games, supporting us this year. So go Wildcats!
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, since we're all full of cake and everything, we'd like to continue, starting with public comments. We'd ask that you could complete a form addressing the Board of Education. If you've already given that to Ms. Huff, we thank you for that. We would like to ask that we would entertain only three minutes per comment. Ms. Huff, do we have anyone that's making public comments that are not on the agenda?
There are none.
Do we have any public comments or items on the open session agenda?
Yes, for President Williams, the first request to speak comes from Reed Davis.
Thank you. This is regarding the suspension of my son Peyton Davis, the student at MHS. This has been stated before, but there's a lot of new faces in the crowd, and I feel obliged to say this. There are questions about the events of March 2nd. But one fact is that the message, there was a message sent through Google Classroom. Who sent it and how would seem most important? First, we need to ask who. MUSD contends that my son Peyton sent it through his phone, but when his phone was analyzed, it was shown to be inconclusive. When Mr. Pavakin was asked about an analysis of Google Classroom, he said it would probably be inconclusive, and he didn't look any further. In his testimony, Mr. Pavakin accused Peyton of wiping the data from his phone. According to Technology Director Pavakin, it would take multiple steps and forty-five seconds to accomplish with a phone that Peyton had. The technology expert contends that Peyton did this while he was being supervised by six or seven MPD officers and two MHS site administrators. Think about that for a minute. The sixteen-year-old student somehow distracted eight or nine professionals trained to observe for forty-five seconds, completing a three- or four-step process. This is in Mr. Pavakin's words. That would be amazing, even if he knew all the steps. The how was never investigated. By his statement on the sixteenth last week, Mr. Pavakin chose not to investigate and look any further than an easy target, that was Peyton Davis. Now to the who. At least three times in her recorded testimony on five sixteen, Assistant Principal Limerick made the following statement when asked by counsel to give the details and describe her investigation. Each time she said, "I was contacted about a threat sent through Google Classroom to Mrs. Rousseau. I went to her room, took a screenshot of the message, and returned to my office. On the way, I called SRO Ruano, who advised me to call dispatch. When I got to my office, I called Mr. Pavakin and advised him. Within a few minutes, MPD officers arrived. I then proceeded to deal with another emergency on campus." At least three times, her own statement was that that was her whole investigation. According to a contractor consultant hired by MUSD, any number of hacking scenarios could and very likely would play out if security issues were not resolved. This email was sent to Technology Director Pavakin and Assistant Superintendent Kaiser on the twenty-fifth of September, 2017. Even though Ms. Oliver warned of potential liability, nothing was done. Not even the recommendation that student passwords be changed from the formulaic pattern to individually chosen letter or number combinations. The consultant warned that students could easily assume another student's digital identity. There is a printout available of approximately six hundred student IDs that are all in the formulaic pattern. Every number follows that pattern. There was an MHS student at the hearing. It took him less than two minutes to show the board, the panel, I apologize, board, they were not here, the panel, how to hack. Mr. McGinnis said that there's no hacking at MHS. He is not aware of any incidents of hacking. At Wednesday's hearing, I'm sorry, we contend that this hacking is what happened. When Peyton's counsel questioned Ms. Limerick if she had considered that it could be someone other than Peyton, she made it obvious who she believed had sent the message. Ms. Limerick was then directly asked by counsel, does it matter if Peyton actually, if Peyton didn't actually do it? If he is innocent? Her response was shocking. Her reply to the question was, no, it doesn't matter. I want you to think about that for a second. Does it matter if Peyton actually did it, and he is innocent? No, it doesn't matter. The lack of effort to investigate the threat shows their negligence. The district and its employees took the very easy route and put their faith in my son's future in a proven to be an obviously hackable system. Now to the second issue used to vilify Peyton. A number of days after Peyton was suspended, three students supposedly approached Ms. Limerick regarding the incident that, according to their statements, took place in Ms. Sanchez's Spanish class. I'll save the board and the audience the discomfort of the details, but they are foul, disgusting, and disturbing. These statements were referenced throughout last Wednesday's proceeding. Each of these statements is differently dated and each date written in a different hand. As testified by Principal Kirk McGinnis, these statements were never investigated. That was Mr. McGinnis's statement. Ms. Limerick, or by any other individual. Further, Ms. Sanchez knew nothing of the event and was never questioned about it. Seemingly, no other students were interviewed either. However, students in that same class have since come to us and said that they have no memory of any event like that taking place. As thin as her investigation of the sent message was, this accusation was seemingly investigated even less than the message. One of the administrators at Wednesday's hearing asked me if I thought Ms. Limerick was capable of soliciting students for accusations. I replied that I had no idea what the administrators were capable of, since I don't really know them. That administrator put the idea in my head, and it makes me wonder why he would say something like that. The district's counsel chose who could be called to testify and what evidence would be entered. For example, Ms. Oliver's email was denied as evidence because, according to counsel, it didn't directly relate to the event of three-two-eighteen. MPD Officer Hermes wasn't allowed to be subpoenaed, and his incident report wasn't allowed to be entered as evidence. MUSD counsel said it wasn't germane to the incident. The police report of the incident was not germane to the incident. These two claims, the message sent and the supposed incident in Spanish class, are what MUSD and MHS have used to persecute and prosecute my son. No investigation by Technology Director Pavakin into the incident on the second, none. A three-hour window was let pass. We have to ask why. There is no good answer. No real investigation by Assistant Principal Limerick or Principal McGinnis into either claim. As she stated in her recorded testimony when asked, does it matter if Peyton actually did it, if he is innocent? And she said, no, it doesn't matter. It seems obvious to anyone that she had already made up her mind. No investigation necessary. When Assistant Principal Limerick made that statement, spectators in this room gasped, and everyone was stunned. The person in charge of the investigation made that shocking admission as casually as you and I breathe. This time has passed. That hateful attitude has come to send a chill down my spine, as it should every parent in this community. To the parents of children in Monrovia schools, these are the people who are charged with the protection of our children. But this high-ranking representative of MUSD has shown, through her disdain for investigation and procedure, that innocence doesn't matter. Thank you.
Ms. Huff, do you have additional comments? Again, may I ask you to limit your time to three minutes?
Yes, President Williams, the next request to speak comes from Jack Gordon.
I'm here to also speak concerning Peyton Davis, the expulsion of an MHS student. First, let me say how much I respect the job that you do, and to see what is taking place this evening. You guys are really dedicated to the school and to the school district. And I can see that. And what has befallen Peyton Davis is a travesty. And I spoke at some length earlier this evening, and I'm not going to go into that today, because you know my comments. And you've heard from the father of Peyton Davis, who has poured his heart out, and from his mother, who has poured her heart out, and has given themselves to the school district as well. But you're about to decide a young man's future. And this is a young man who excels in all that he does. And this is a young man who's working on being an Eagle Scout, an AP student. He's a young man who goes to church, who loves God, who loves his family, who is of good moral character. And you're about to decide this, this decision is to be about this man and his future, and you need to know the facts before you make a serious decision. So with all that's come before you before, I'd ask you to take into consideration that, even when we had earlier some testimonies by some of his friends and some of his teachers, on what a good person he is, and indeed, the, some of the problems with the, with the security of the Google Classroom situation. But I please ask you to use your good judgment and make the right decision today and exonerate Peyton Davis. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Huff, do we have an additional person?
Yes, President Williams, the next request to speak comes from Lanell Bryson Davis.
Speak to the board after we render our decision? What regards to a public comment, ma'am? Please, thank you so much for that. Yes. Forgive me? No, you're fine, ma'am. Thank you. Any other comments, Ms. Huff?
Yes, President Williams, the last request to speak comes from April Stefan.
Good evening. I'm a former resident of the city of Monrovia, and I've had the privilege and honor of knowing the Davis family. And I'm considered a family member, although I am not by blood. Peyton Davis refers to me as Auntie. I can tell you that this situation has not been easy for this family. If you are not personally aware of their commitment to this community, Reed Davis was born and raised here, went through the school district, chose to make Monrovia his home for his family, and wanted the best for his children to be through this community. I have walked through this community, lived right in the heart of Old Town, 201 West Colorado Boulevard was my address, one block west of Myrtle. And every Friday, part of this community, we've been into pawn stores, pawn stores, we've been into mayor walking into, we've just been part of the community. Joe Garcia had an immense amount of time, but this is about Peyton, and I wanted you to know that Peyton is a lover. A fighter is not him. If I showed you the amount of books this child has read, it would fill probably close to two eighteen-wheel trucks. His life is in the face of a book. His life, his parents call me. I am a computer guru. I'm a systems analyst for the City of Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. I build computer systems for a living, and I've done that for twenty years. Their parents, Reed and Lanell, call me. They can't even ask their children to help them with their computer or even their cellphone. They call me when they want to purchase something. I can tell you that Peyton has a lot of abilities. Doing what has been suggested is not one of them. It's not even in his pattern of thinking. That's not who he is. This is a child who, almost every Friday night, for ten years, we had dinner together in restaurants, Aruti's, or the Monrovian, or we can go down the list of places that we have gone. And from birth until, I want to say he was close to twelve years old, still sitting on his mom's lap. This is a person who is, whose childhood is being stolen from him. And that is not what this community is about. We just had your Monrovia days, and I missed it. But I'll tell you this, they were active members, soapbox races, Boy Scouts, we could just list the things of how much they love this community. So if you think you're just changing this boy's life, you're changing and affecting the lives of all the students at Santa Fe and Monrovia High School, and people who have known these teachers and brother, and who is Logan, who's graduating this year as a senior. I'm asking you guys to please do all that you can to not look at this as anything else other than this was wrong. In our world, where we come from, there's three things that we say when we're wrong. I'm sorry, will you forgive me? I was wrong. And I'm asking for the board and for the school district to say those words to Peyton Davis. He is due that phrase. We're sorry, we were wrong. Will you forgive us?
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Huff, do we have any additional?
There are none.
Thank you for that. Thank you for all your comments, and it was received. We're moving to item J, informational reports and presentations, starting with Canyon Early Learning Center. Ms. Lethrop?
We have with us Cindy Lethrop, who retired and then was called back into service to be the director of our Canyon Early Learning Center. Cindy, your time with us is just not coming to a close yet.
I guess not.
But we are so thankful for your, our schools to be in your capable hands yet again.
Thank you very much. Good evening, it's good to see all of your faces again, although I never would have thought I'd be presenting to you again. And you'll have to forgive me, I'm a little rusty. And I'm talking about Canyon Early Learning Center today, and the picture that you, is, well, you will see, I think. There we go. And the picture that you, that's not them, that's not my presentation. But that's them at the parade. There we go. The picture that you see right there is a little girl peeking out of a playhouse that was built by the students because they're studying, they were studying buildings at the time. So we do academic units that involve a lot of things, and that was one of them. It's a cute picture of a student doing work, but play as well. I wanted to tell you a little bit about what the program is. We have two-hundred-and-fifty-five students at the school. Forty-eight of them are special-day class students, and they spend a lot of time also with our gen ed students. And five of them are SOPA, Special Education, students. We have twenty-four students in a full-day class and a hundred-and-seventy-four students in half-day classes. Six students only are tuition-based students. And a hundred-and-eighty-seven students identify as Hispanic, and we have something over fifty-three English learners in our school. I wanted to also tell you that we're working on a new curriculum. They bought a new curriculum, and that's what they've been working on this year. It's new to them, but it's nice to see them all growing and learning the curriculum along with their students. Our instructional focus remains the same as it has been for the last couple of years, and that is to learn to control your behavior, to plan and implement and complete an activity, to maintain attention, to respond to feedback, to focus, follow directions, be patient, take turns, persevere, and many, many other things. It's a fancy term, executive function for it, but that's what it means. My first day of work back at Canyon, we had an auditor come in for our state review, and that was a fun way to start. She was there all week, and she went through hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of things that we have to be accountable at the preschool for in many different areas. She spent a week there. We were compliant in eighteen of the twenty areas that were reviewed. All of those items were corrected in one way or another while she was on-site, but she wouldn't change the report, I'm sorry to say. But they have all been corrected since then, and we have written a correction plan, have submitted it, and it's been accepted by the state. Just to give you a little bit of an idea of what those items included, we had outside in the play area, we had some Disney books that were deemed inappropriate for preschool use. So we've, it's been a learning process, because sometimes, if it was me, I would say, well, Disney books, come on. But we need to be extra careful with the types of stories that students are exposed to, because some Disney stories can be a little bit scary for students. So we removed those books, that's how that was corrected. In our classrooms, one of the routines is hand washing. It's very important at preschool. And one of the things that happened is students were touching the trash can as they threw away their paper towels. And so we corrected that by taking off the lid and making sure that students were not touching the trash can unless they re-washed their hands after they did that. And one of the other things is that our south playground, which you see from the parking lot out here, that playground is deemed inappropriate for preschool kids because it was built for kindergarten, and there are a couple of things that we need to fix out there. It's corrected for now because we have, we're not using that playground, but I'm hoping that we can correct things enough that we can use it for all of our students in the future. So those are the things, types of things that we were working on. Another item that goes into all of our reports is that the teachers do a couple of things. One is that they, there are forty-three items on an environmental rating scale that teachers have to use to rate their environment and their teaching practices, and that is something that went into the report, and we work with it on a regular basis to improve that, and a lot of our staff development is based on that as well. And then we also have academic standards, and the teachers, twice a year, rate their students on fifty-six competencies, twice a year. And those competencies, what they do is, this is an example of the report that they get back, and it shows the fall and the spring, and you want to see, the bottom line is the spring, top line is the fall, I mean, the bottom line is the fall, the top line is the spring, you want to see growth from that black line to the next black line. And we have growth in all of our areas, which is really good. So our program self-review involves all of those things, as well as parent involvement and outreach to our community, our staff development, and I've mentioned some of the other things there. So all of those things went into our self-review, and we have put it into our action plan, and we are all set to start a new school year. I want to tell you that I'm happy that I had the experience of coming to CELC, and it's a great program with amazing teachers, and we have a teacher here with us. And if you want to smile, you have to come visit CELC. And thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Cindy.
Do you have any questions?
Well, for those of you who don't know the likes of this young lady, she served in a capacity as a principal at Monroe for several years. She's an outstanding leader, which warrants Dr. Terosian to bring her back, which I'm excited about. So thank you again for your report. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Thank you, Ms. Lethrop.
Our next agenda item is our Village After School program. Mr. McFadden?
Thank you, Dr. Rosen, forgive that brain freeze of mine. It happens.
So we have some special guests with us besides myself tonight to help us present our village overview for the year. I'm very excited about our students and parents that represent the over three-hundred-and-fifty families and over five-hundred students that participate in the village program. We serve six schools in the district for before and after-school programs. So Board President Williams, the rest of the board, Dr. Terosian, Cabinet, we're just excited to be here tonight to do an overview of the village program. With that being said, we, when y'all, when I give you the high sign, you're going to come up and say who you are. you're going to come up and say who you are and what school you represent in the Village program. And we have some of these students that have prepared speeches, and they're all nervous. So it's great for us to be here together as we move along. So just a real quick highlights of what's been going on with Village this school year. We've had three schools now that have been recognized by the state of California as distinguished after-school programs. So our programs at Plymouth, Brad Oaks, and Wild Rose got the distinguished after-school awards over the last two years. We're very excited and proud of that fact. Right now, we're in the midst of implementing our Easy Child Track system, beginning with online registration. So we're working through a couple of bumps in the road with that. But we're moving to an online automation of a lot of the processes that the Village program goes through, through this system called Easy Child Track. And we have, and we'll have one of our students explain this more, but we were offered through Dr. Kaiser, an opportunity to partic- participate in Code to the Future as part of our enrichment program. We'll talk about that here in a second. But anytime you can have kids do some stuff, make robots, and pick up tissue boxes, it's always a big highlight. We had our middle schools participate in Science Action Clubs, and they did that successfully as, again, another part of the enrichment program. And we've been recognized at various county and state levels as a model program as we move forward through the development and the growth of Village. So we have three big umbrellas of what we do in the program. First is, we provide academic assistance in a couple of different ways. We provide homework assistance. We do, our data results show that Village students do achieve on a higher scale. So we're really thankful about having results-driven data to show. We started a Khan Academy pilot at Clifton and Santa Fe earlier in the spring. So they're getting targeted help in math, again, with a liaison with Ed Services. We're very excited about that. And we have ongoing communication with principals, teachers, and district office personnel to provide as much academic assistance as we can. And we have a couple of students that are going to talk about their experience with academic assistance. So our Santa Fe Middle School student, come on down. I'll let you introduce yourself. And we also have an elementary school student, so come out over here. Tell them who you are.
My name is Mark Tevis.
And the school, you're from Santa Fe?
Santa Fe Middle School.
And now you can say why you're, why you're.
Good evening, my name is Mark Tevis. I'm an eighth grader at Santa Fe Computer Science Magnet School. At the beginning of the school year, I wasn't doing so good academically. I had three Ds, two Bs, an A, C, and eight missing assignments. During the Village Extended School Program, I asked Ms. Johnson, an activity leader, for assistance with my homework. After noticing my missing assignments, Ms. Johnson automatically made sure that I not only completed my daily homework, but that I also completed my missing assignments. Towards the middle of the school year, my grades improved. I now had three Cs, two Bs, an A, and no missing assignments. My grades improved thanks to Ms. Johnson for pushing me and making sure that my homework was not just done, but done correctly. And let's not forget those missing assignments. She would check them on a weekly basis to make sure that whatever was missing, I would complete and turn in. She would motivate me and push me to properly prepare for upcoming tests. Then here comes Christmas break, finally. A new grading period has started, a chance for a fresh, new start. My grades kept increasing, and now I have three Bs, two As, a C, and still no missing assignments. My grades have been the best I've ever had since I could remember. An accomplishment, thanks to Ms. Johnson's pushing and motivation. I'm grateful to be part of the Village Extended School Program, and most thankful for Ms. Johnson and all the work she has done to make sure I got the help I needed.
Hello, my name is Christopher. I've been in the Village program for three years. I get homework out, I get homework out from Mr. Nellis and my classmates. With their help, I finish homework almost every day at Village. These are my, these are Mr. Nellis's ideas. When we finish our homework early, we can read, draw, and journal. My favorite thing to do is draw, but I read every week. Thank you for your time.
And I would actually be remiss if I didn't recognize our two site managers that are here with us tonight. One, Judy Townsend from Brad Oaks, where Christopher goes to school. And of course, you can't miss Mr. Ross in the back, our site manager over there at Santa Fe. The other thing that we provide a big umbrella of is enrichment activities. We do all kinds of things at all the sites for enrichment. One of the things that all the sites participated in earlier in the year was our Lights On After School event that was highlighted by a Michael Jackson look-alike in dancing. We had a group dance experience with Michael Jackson, and then Senator Portantino was here as well. That was a lot of fun. We also, this year again, participated or partnered with Noise Within, who's been doing a drama residency program at the middle schools for the last three years. And this year, we did a combined drama residency for Clifton and Santa Fe for Henry V. Science Action Club, like I mentioned, we had at the middle schools. Code to the Future, we'll talk about that here in a second, was offered at Wild Rose and Plymouth. And we do lots of different clubs, depending on the site, there's a variety of clubs. And we have one of our club representatives, our parent volunteers, that will speak here in a second as well. So there's a lot of different things that we do for enrichment. So at this time, can Isabel, come on over here, we'll have you go first. Tell them your name and what school you're from, but they know it's Isabel, but go ahead anyway.
I'm Isabel, a fifth-grade student at Plymouth Elementary. And I'm given the wonderful opportunity to participate in the Code to the Future program. If you don't know about this program, I'm here to tell you. Code takes up approximately one hour of the Village program. In that hour, we program, download, and create the three steps of Code to the Future. In programming, we use a computer to program certain blocks to make your robot do something like make noise, make faces, or move around. In download, we take our computers and connection cord, plug them in, and press the download button. In create, we find our file, and our robot is now working. Thank you for your attention.
And we also are blessed to have a lot of parent volunteers at our different sites that help us out. So we have a couple of parent volunteers that are going to speak tonight. The first one, along with family, they're coming out here all together en masse, which is great. Mr. Saltanian, so.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. My name is Viking Saltanian. You know, it's an honor for me to be here. I am a parent volunteer, so you know what I do is, I'm an independent chef and also work for Marriott, the resort in downtown L.A. So I have collaborated with Mr. Ross at a Santa Fe Middle School, and we created this club called Grub Life. So like, on my spare time, you know, like instead of, you know, I go out, okay, I go out, you know, buy the ingredients. You know, I come to school, you know, like we, like we make special arrangements, like about two-hour cooking class. So, you know, I go there, I teach kids life skill. Like, you know, how to cook, and like the kids love it. You know, so like after I teach them how to cook, they go pass out the food, like small portions, and like they enjoy it, they love it. So far, I've taught them how to make French toast from scratch, homemade mac and cheese, biscuits and gravy, so on and so forth. My last one's going to be, you know, cooking ham, you know, show them how to cook hamburgers, grill hamburgers with all the condiments, that'll be my last class for the year. Oh yeah, Caesar salad, Caesar dressing. So, you know, I enjoy what I do, and you know, like no one ever taught me, and you know, I went to Le Corse Blue. So, you know, I want to, I want to, I want to pass along to the young generation, you know.
What's your class?
Grub Life. Once a month. You guys are all welcome, you know. And hopefully one day I'll be here and, you know, pass on my passion.
Thank you so much, man.
Yes, sir, it's an honor, thank you. You're welcome.
They're eating good over at Santa Fe, obviously in the club. They do eat well. But that's not to say that we take away from our snack and supper program, Mr. Singleton, we do that too. Okay, just so you understand. So the next thing I wanted to bring up is that our program is funded primarily through the After School Enrichment Safety Grant, ACES Grant. And because of that, we have to pay attention to, we have standards also. And we have 12 standards that we have to pay attention to in a process that we go through called the quality, the continuous quality improvement cycle. So we use that and the data from that to drive our program and how we do things. Two of the standards that are highlighted up there were points of emphasis for us over the last couple of years, safe and supportive environment being one of them. And safe and supportive environment goes into, you know, physical safety, but also emotional safety of the students, which covers a whole range of, of things that we teach the students in and during the program. And because of this, we wanted to point out some of the things we do for creating safe and supportive environment. So we implement the PBIS structure that we have here in the district. We have social-emotional learning experiences at all the sites, along with our youth development. We actively acknowledge positive behavior. We have our staff that is trained in a variety of health and safety trainings, including first aid, CPR, and our mental health initiative through LACO. We also follow our MUSD policies and procedures and put those in alignment in the after-school program as well. So, that being said, if Mr. Booker can come on up and, and our other student representative, you guys come on up.
So.
You're, you're on.
Okay, so my name is Jamal Booker. I own a company called Real Estate Finance Group. We finance businesses in real estate in Monrovia. I've pretty much gone to private school most of my life, from second grade to eighth grade, then I went to South Pasadena High School, I went to Waldorf Schools in Altadena. So I have my daughter in private schools and Duarte and other private schools because that was kind of my background. I saw some myopic mentalities at the school that she was at. So I wanted to get her away from that environment, and I was looking for a good public school for her to be involved in. I've been in this community for, since I think 2003, doing financing. I used to work at Bank in Duarte. And so I went to Santa Fe because of the coding program. I wanted to do something that was going to be different for the future, understanding how things work. I want my daughter to be prepared for what's going to happen when she comes of age. So I picked Santa Fe. I transferred in a district, or transferred from Duarte to Monrovia specifically for Santa Fe. And one of the main reasons I did that is I met Tadise Ross. So my biggest concern is going for a little girls in the environment where you go tell the teacher every time somebody acts wrong or says something not nice or is impolite. You can go say, "They weren't nice to me." Now, she's going to go in an environment with a lot more people, and that's not necessarily going to work. That's called a tattletale, right? So I wanted her to be in an environment or around people that she's going to see how the world works, so she's going to be able to adapt to it. The other part of it is, I wanted her to be safe, I want her to be protected. I wanted her to be okay when I had to work, or if I had projects, or I had to go have a meeting. I knew she was going to be okay. So the first person I met was Mr. Ross. And he is the reason my daughter goes to Santa Fe Middle School. If I didn't meet him, I mean, I can afford to take her wherever I want to take her. She's there because I know she's safe, the school is good, I met Dr. Z. And so I just wanted to say this program makes me very confident. If I got to get to Santa Fe at 6 o'clock, my daughter's safe. Any incident that's ever occurred, it's been taken care of, it's been handled, she's okay, I'm not concerned. He handles the children very well. I see that, very dynamic personality that does really well. And I think the program is very beneficial in regards to, I see a lot of kids that are hanging out at the Jack-in-the-Box. I see them hanging out, and their parents haven't put them in this program. They shouldn't be there. They're just, they don't have anywhere to be. They're just sitting there because their parents haven't put them somewhere. I don't want that for my daughter. And I'm glad this program exists for her to have a place to be, to be safe and to do her homework. And I can, and to get here, actually, she had a recital earlier today. I called Mr. Ross and said, "What room is it in?" In fact, I would know who to call at the school, so I called him. And that's, so I think this program is very beneficial from having all these kids working together, and also having to feel belonging and to be able to adapt to some of these, this large environment for kids coming from everywhere. It's kind of eased her and transitioned her, and she loves it. So, yeah, thank you.
So our last student will introduce herself and her school, and she's going to go over her speech.
Hi, I'm Leah Medina, a fourth-grade student from Plymouth Elementary School. And I am here to tell you about Character Ed. What is Character Ed? Character Ed is something that teaches us how to be a true sport, not only with playing games, but also with each other. When, when you want to be a true sport, you should be fair and follow the six pillars of character, which, and those six characters are trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. We also use the eye-care language. If someone is being mean, you make eye contact, tell them how you feel and how it affected you. Thank you for your time.
So obviously, we're very blessed to have outstanding parents and families and students in Village and in this community at large. So like I said, we do, and Leah did a great job explaining the Character Education program. So that was just a real quick overview of Village. Again, we're doing our online registration right now. And we'll do open registration next week for fam- new families that want to register for us. So at this point, if there's questions, I'll entertain those and I'll go get these people their little gift and send them on their way since.
Mr. McFadden, Mr. Gilley, and I'd like to know what time that cooking class is.
Mr. Ross and Mr., when you, we'll send you guys a personal invitation. For sure, we'll get that in the electronic mail for you.
Mr. Ross, thank you for your representation. Thank you, Ms. McFadden. And thank you to the wonderful kids who represented as well. Nurture every student together. We'd like to hear from Dr. Catherine Riel.
I'd like to introduce this program to us. Board President Williams and Board, we're pleased to present to you the Mental Health Plan for MUSD Elementary Schools. MUSD has been very fortunate. During the past three years, we had the privilege of having a school counseling grant in the amount of $1.2 million. The grant had the following goals. Number one, to develop a multiple-tiered system of support for our students with three tiers that you'll learn about tonight. To select a social-emotional learning curriculum that was done. To train teachers, counselors, and administrators to implement the social-emotional learning curriculum and the multiple tiers system of support in all elementary schools. And to monitor the implementation of the curriculum and to provide coaching, support to improve instructional practices in this regard. And to develop MOUs with agencies such as Five Acres to provide intensive mental health intervention. As we are rounding the end of this year and the grant cycle, we have developed through Dr. Catherine Riel's office the continuation plan to meet the needs of our students in our schools in the areas called out by the grant. And she is here to present this plan to you tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Williams, Board members, Dr. Terosian, members of the Cabinet, and members of the public. I'm here tonight to talk about how we will be nurturing every student together by providing layers of services to support social and emotional health at the elementary level. Nurture every student together, so we're creating a nest. Okay, so I would like to review first our multi-tiered system of support. And that looks like this. Basically, we would be using our existing data of how students, how students are making their way through the day and what services they need. And we are using that data to apply it for those students who need it the most. And that's all students at the universal level, the targeted level for those students who demonstrate need, and then at the intensively, intensive level for those students with the most critical needs. Okay, so in providing the right services to the right students, we are very fortunate in the Monrovia Unified School District to benefit from many, many partners and. in the Monrovia Unified School District to benefit from many, many partners and tools at our disposals to provide this nest of layered support. For example, we have our Olveus Bullying Prevention Program. We have many community agency partners such as Pacific Clinics, Foothill Family. We also have the Parent Institute for Quality Education that assists us in providing parent education. We also have our three higher ed partners, the University of Laverne, the University of California at Riverside, and Azusa Pacific, with whom we are working to place school psychologist interns at all of our elementary sites, and we have existing MOUs with all of these universities already. We have our second step learning, uh, I'm sorry, second step, social-emotional learning curriculum, and we are also looking into an online resource to help families, parents, teachers, and administrators in, um, searching for additional mental health, uh, resources in our community through this vetted process. We are also looking at the Zones of Regulation, which would be professional development to help teachers, help students recognize their emotions and learn how to regulate them. We also have our existing, um, PBIS framework, and I put DeVille in the corner, bottom-left corner here, not because they've been bad, but because they've been so good and they are a cornerstone of our program. They've been amazing in helping us design this nest of layered support, um, for our staff, for our students, and for our families. We also have our eye coaches here in the Monrovia Unified School District who will be providing digital citizenship lessons for our students. So these are just, um, some of our partners and programs that we have, like I said, at our disposal and making sure we're getting the right services to the right students. So, as I mentioned, we have universal support that will be provided in all classrooms to our students, where they will receive high-quality, research-based instruction, um, such as the bullying prevention, the digital citizenship lessons, the social-emotional learning second step, and our positive behavior intervention and supports. In addition to that, we have PK and DeVille who will be providing professional development, professional development and, and parent education. So I'm really excited about being able to pair the DeVille parent education with our existing PK classes, so parents just transfer seamlessly from their PK class to additional parenting resources. Students who, um, are still demonstrating need after receiving the benef, the universal, uh, support would move on to our targeted support. And targeted support would be provided in, um, the forms of group interventions such as student study teams or small group interventions to address such things as, uh, students dealing with grief, students dealing with anxiety, um, social skills and attendance, for example. And those services would be provided not only by our own school psychologists, of which there, um, we have a half, a half-time psychologist at each of our elementary, but in addition to that, DeVille will be supplying registered, uh, marriage and family therapists and social workers to work with our students at our site at no cost to us. Um, in addition, we have the UC Riverside, Azusa Pacific, and University of Laverne school psychologist interns who will be working to help us, um, provide these services to our students. And lastly, those students demonstrating the most critical needs for services will, um, will get those services through our community agencies. So our school psychologists working with our interns and registered marriage and family therapists and social workers will be referred to Pacific Clinics, Clinics, DeVille, Foothill Family, and Five Acres, and oftentimes, those services can be provided on an individual basis right on our school campuses if it's convenient for students and families. So they're really benefiting from a, a very layered nest of, of support that, uh, that they need and they deserve, and we're really pleased with our plan to provide a nest where we will be nurturing every student together. Do you have any questions?
No comments or questions for Dr. Riel regarding Nest?
Just to thank you for putting this program together. We certainly hear a lot about our grant going away for our counselors and what's gonna happen, and this nested, uh, uh, layer of support is so critical as we lose the money to pay those counselors that we backfill that with wonderful partners that we have.
Yes, yes, we're really lucky. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Riel. Moving to item K, our consent agenda, which consists of 13 items. A business placed on the consent agenda have been carefully screened by the members of the staff and would be acted upon by the board with one motion. Upon request of any, an item on the consent agenda may be considered separately at its location on the meeting agenda. Uh, the consent agenda items, uh, do we have any pull, Dr. Torosian? Just follow in the format.
We do not.
And like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Huff?
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Action items to include educational services led by Dr. Kaiser.
Um, President Williams and Board, this is one of the most exciting times of year to bring these items before you, and we will bring the next few items before you one at a time with great celebration. Um, and we are asking, the Board of Education has requested to approve the Monrovia Community Adult School students for graduation on May 31st, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Huff?
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Please lead us, Dr. Kaiser.
Yes, the next item is the Board of Education has requested to approve Monrovia High School students for graduation on June 6th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Huff?
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Dr. Kaiser?
The Board of Education is requested to approve Canyon Oaks High School students for graduation on June 5th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Doc?
The Board of Education is requested to approve Mountain Park School students for graduation on June 5th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Multi-year purchase and sales agreement between the Center for Math and Teaching and Monrovia Unified School District. Dr. Kaiser?
Yes, Board, um, President Williams, we are pulling this item from the agenda to rework the enrollment numbers, um, as we have declining enrollment over the next couple of years, and we want to make sure that we have an accurate purchase order ready to go. It's a three-year agreement. It will come back next time.
So noted and received. Any comments regarding that matter? Moving to item seven, forgive me, item six, business service. Ms. Wu?
It's the international programs.
Forgive me.
It's item six, and this is the Board Policy 6145.6 International Programs and Accompanying Administrative Regulation. The Board of Education has requested to receive for first reading Board Policy 6145.6 International Programs and Accompanying Administrative Regulation. Um, there's one, um, piece of this that, um, Board Member Wong has discussed with Mrs. Wu regarding the fees, and Mrs. Wu is going to discuss that.
Yeah, um, the fee will be subject change annually, so, um, we will have attachment at once the, um, Board agreeing upon the annual fee, and then that will be added in the second readings. Uh, we're still working on the, the fees research, and I will work with my Board Leader, Mr. Wong, to finalize and submit for Board approval with the second readings.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Huff?
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. I now believe you're at item six now?
Seven.
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 Yep. Good evening, President Williams and Board of Education and Dr. Torosian, Cabinet and Audience and the community members, and this will be the first reading for the Board Policy, Local Wellness Policy, and the Administrative Regulation. As a district, we are required to periodically update our Board Policy to, um, in, along with the, uh, most current, um, ed code and rural regulation. Tonight, I would like to invite my Director of Food Services, Mr. Ken Singleton, to present a detail about the changes in regarding of the local wellness policy.
President Williams, Board Members, Dr. Torosian, Cabinet, and fellow Monrovians, uh, as Connie mentioned, I'm Ken Singleton, Food Services Director, and requesting that you receive this for the first read as Connie, the, the local wellness policy for the first read. It's Board Policy 5030 with, um, the accompanying administrative regula, uh, regulations. Um, the local wel, wellness policy was born out of, uh, the WIC Reauthorization Act of 2004. The original, um, was adopted in 2004 by Monrovia as well as many districts, uh, across the country as it was mandated. Um, but that policy sat on a shelf and, uh, didn't become a, a living document. So the current wellness policy, um, I'm just gonna read from this and then I'll tell you a little bit, um, why this plan is a little bit more special. The Desert Knee shall coordinate and align the district's effort to support students' wellness through health education, physical education, and activity, health services, nutrition services, psychological and counseling services, and a safe and healthy school environment. In addition, the Desert Knee should develop strategies for promoting staff wellness and for involving parents, guardians, and the community, and reinforcing students' understanding and appreciation of the importance of healthy lifestyles. And so, what's gonna be different about, about this document and the, the Hunger Free and Healthy Kids Act of 2010, which was also a WIC reauthorization act of 2010, but the food service directors out there, it was called the Hunger Free and Healthy Kids Act. This, uh, act expanded upon the, the, the old wellness policy and charged us with updating it. And, um, and so, and it was begin to, um, they charged us to begin in years 2011 and 12 to move toward updating it. And so, um, one of the requirements is for this policy to, is to be posted in all of the cafeterias, but as you can see, um, upon adoption of it later on in the foreseeable future, um, they will be posted in the cafeterias. But, um, one of the things that I'm going to do to make this a living document is in a one-page handout or, um, and it will be available on digits as well, as I met with Haley Martinez, I believe she's the senior class president, our, in our last wellness, um, meeting, our annual wellness meeting last week. Um, she gave me ideas of how to reach the students, but we're prepared to, upon adoption of this policy, to, uh, get this out to all of the families. It's a one-pager that sums up what wellness is in Monrovia. One side is for our elementary-level, um, students, and then the other side is for our secondary-level students. But it talks about nutrition, physical activities, and healthy behaviors. Um, all of those things is covered in this multi-page document that they may not read. And then, also, we've put together evaluation components, and so different entities throughout the district, um, will receive this at the beginning of the year. And so, um, what's going to happen moving forward with this policy is there will be annual meetings, there will be updates to the Board, um, entities, the different stakeholders and groups will be able to chime in and, and see if our wellness policy is working and what improvements need to be made. I think that's all I have for you, pending your questions.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Singleton?
Was the base document a, a, uh, California Schools Association, or was this created from scratch?
No, it was the California Schools Association, so, but through, um, multiple meetings over the years, we've put together, this is three years in, in the making, and so, and, uh, yes. Based on stakeholders' input, um, Bernadette Williams, our nurse, we have teachers on our committee, we have counselors on the committee, they all chimed in and said what, uh, needs to be in this document.
So it was tweaked to meet our needs?
Yes, it was.
So you're thinking that the one-pager is gonna be better than the 20?
No, the 20 is a, it, it, it's a must. It has to be, but, um, it may, it will reach, um, our students and our households, and our plan is to put it into our opening package or the package that they submit. I think it's a, yeah, opening day package to the families.
Perfect.
And so that they'll know that we have a wellness policy.
Additional questions for Mr. Singleton? Motion's on the floor.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Huff?
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Next, we're moving to item L8, 1718, 2117, MOU between the Monrovia Unified and the Goulou District Educational Bureau facilitated by Genseng Educational Services for international exchange. Okay, excuse us. No, I've got the one that was in my pouch. Difficulties with our documentation here, so forgive me for my leadership here. Resolution to adopt a California Unified, uh, Public Construction Cost Account. Ms. Wu?
Yes, President Williams, um, Board of Education, as you know, that currently, um, district contractor for the construction work is under the Public Construction, uh, Public, um, Contract Code Section 20111. There is another guideline, is called California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting, also called COPCA. They are also guiding how the public entity to go through the public project bidding process. That, um, rural regulation will give us a higher threshold to do the formal bid. Our contact, uh, our current guideline is any construction project exceeding $15,000 need to go through the formal bid. Under the COPCA, the threshold improved to $175,000. Um, under this guideline, it will allow the public entity to have more flexibility and to conduct median and small-size project. I would invite my Director of, um, MOT, Mr. Larry Cross, to share with the Board with the detail and his experience because his former school is, the, um, popular project was under the COPCA guideline. And, um, Board, in your handout, we, um, give you the summary about the different threshold in the COPCA for the project under $45,000, uh, just, um, informal code from the, um, $45,000 to 145, informal bid, and more than 140, um, more than 175,000 is go through the formal bid.
Okay, so, um, good evening. Yeah, the, uh, the past few districts that I worked for both were, uh, associated with COPCA. They had both passed the resolution to be a COPCA district, and the advantages are that, uh, it allows the district to complete projects in a more timely manner and at a more competitive price. It's, it's still, under $45,000, our projects will, um, be awarded, uh, to vendors or to contractors that have been pre-qualified. There's a pre-qualification process for, for all, all contractors, and, um, we can award projects under $45,000. However, they're still subject to a field contract, so it doesn't necessarily, um, bypass the Board if the Board chooses to approve all contracts. Projects that are 45 to 175,000 still require Board approval and then, which is called, uh, in COPCA, an informal process, informal, uh, bid. And then, um, through normal contract bidding, any project over 175,000 is a formal contract and goes through the normal advertising period. Uh, COPCA is a big advantage to districts in my opinion because it allows...
COPCA is a big advantage to districts, in my opinion, because it allows us to get work done, not necessarily, you know, with more money, it just allows us to get work done quickly and more efficiently. Projects that are under $45,000, for example, we have a project here as an example, which is to air-condition the score booth. My preliminary estimates are about $27,000. Under COPCA, we can move forward with that project. Without COPCA, I have to go out to competitive bid because despite the estimates I've received, they exceed the $15,000 contract limit. So that's the kind of advantage that this program would bring to the district.
Any questions for Mr. Larry regarding the resolution?
Yes. Could you give us the background of, briefly, the background of COPCA and why this is an acceptable form, and why other districts are using this or other municipalities are using this, and that this isn't just some wild way to avoid competitive bidding?
Well, COPCA, I don't know the exact history, but no, it was adopted, I think, back in 1983 as a way for districts, and not just districts, but all public agencies, to award contracts and to be able to expedite the process without having to go through competitive bidding for everything. The current state contract limits are 15 and 50, $15,000 for construction-type projects, $50,000 for professional services. From what I understand, the state wanted to kind of give better guidelines for competitive bidding after doing projects with public funds, and that's how COPCA was born. Most districts adopted because it actually provides more control over the money, not less, but it also enables my department or facility departments to get work done quicker without having to take everything to the Board for approval. As I mentioned before, though, it's still under, still, $45,000 under still field contract, and if the Board approves all contracts, it will still come to the Board.
And, may I?
Please.
Something like this, I have an inherent problem with, is that we're placed here as oversight. And once you remove the public from the oversight of the public's money, it invites disaster, even in small proportions, as little as $27,000. And we're talking about a multimillion-dollar agency such as the school district, $27,000 is the change that rolls out of your pocket when you sit on the couch. And so, I inherently have a problem when you remove the public oversight from the public funds. I understand, Connie, you're shaking your head no, but yes. Because what can happen here is that, and everybody here is fine, I'm talking about the policy we put in place today, that in five years from now, when we're not here, is still the policy. And that policy is that whoever the MOT person is at the time, we'll make it 20 years from now, that way you're not out of here in five. 20 years from now, is you have all your pals lined up who you do business with and you like, and you just keep feeding them and feeding them and feeding them and feeding them. And we don't know whether they're best or not, they just happen to fit into the dollar amount that no one questions. So I have a real big problem with this.
Let me ask another question, just to make sure that I'm clear on this as well. I think we all have that, the same concern of abuse. I mean, there's been a number of districts in a very, very close proximity to us that have had problems related to bids. One of the things that I would want to see if it would work is the concern about competitive bidding, the way that it's written, is the way that it has to be published, certain amount of time has to go by, and there's an entire appeals process if people so choose, and it can be very time-consuming and expensive. But is it possible, even with these larger limits, that the Board could put in the controls that we're used to seeing? I mean, that the Board wants to see the three, instead of formal bids perhaps, that they're three estimates from three different companies that are on the approval list. Can we add a layer of comfort for us to be able to review bids still over the $15,000, but perhaps not having to go through the formal bid process, the true bid process, which is the part I think that most people are kind of loathe to go through because it can be kind of painful with all the publishing and so forth?
Absolutely. This does not replace Board policy and doesn't replace oversight. It's just a guideline for contracting out work. So, for example, one of the districts I worked for, any project under $45,000, we had to get three, we had to have three qualified contractors. We would get estimates from all three qualified contractors and then select the lowest bid, unless there was something wrong with that bid. So it's still a competitive process using the lowest bidder off the pre-qualified list. And then, we would have to generate a field contract and a purchase order, but purchase orders still go through the oversight process through business services, and the field contract still comes to the Board for approval. So it's not, it's not just, yet awarding a contract for $40,000 and nobody knows what happened, because that's not, that's not the process that I'm used to, and that's not really what COPCA is about.
Larry, can you share with the Board of the process of prequalification?
What happens when a contractor wants to become pre-qualified? There is a packet that they have to fill. We have to talk about their bonding capacity, their history, they have complaints filed against them, their creditworthiness, their, you know, how long they've been in business. There's all, there's all kinds of questions that are, have to be answered to become a pre-qualified vendor. And those vendors, I believe, also become ratified by the Board. So they fill out their packets, and then there's the approval process of them.
My concern with the pre-qualified contractors is, let's take Rob's example of a completely different person in charge, because we know this would never happen. They have a friend who is doing something somewhat unique, remodeling or something very specific. They don't, they don't really make it well-known that we're going to have this problem. They have one person, their friend, get pre-qualified, don't really tell or let anybody else know what's going on. So by the time that the contract comes out, that we have only one pre-qualified person. So my question is, what safeguards do we put in place to make sure we have ample enough time to make sure that people can become pre-qualified? I'm not as concerned about the routine things, like, say, an electrician, in which we know we're going to have continuous painting, electrician, the general stuff, but the one-off things that are somewhat unique, that people are not going to think, oh, I better go get pre-qualified because sometime in the next five years, they might want to put something out to bid. So can we, how long does this prequalification thing take to do? And is that going to ever cause us a problem to get contracts done on unique items?
The previous districts I worked for, the prequalification was renewed annually. And keep in mind that the limits don't mean we have to stick to the limits. And what I mean by that is, if we have one contractor, one painting contractor, under that we were going to offer a job that's under $45,000, and we're not comfortable with that, we go to the informal process. That way, we invite the whole list. Right now, under $45,000, you invite the trade of the project. So let's say we have one painter, five electricians, and three general contractors. Under $45,000, we would only invite the painter. Over $45,000, or if we choose to go informal, we would invite the general contractors and the painter. If we're not comfortable with that, we still can go out, even for a $45,000 project, to formal bidding process. It just depends on what it is we're doing. If we don't have qualified contractors, that's what you do, we go to formal bid.
I guess my concern is that I don't want to have a situation in which we only have one pre-qualified person in our rural state that we use the pre-qualified person. We review the person's work, his costs or whatever, and we think, wow, I think we could do better than this, and that they come back and complain and say, look, you said you're only going to select pre-qualified people, I'm the only pre-qualified person, therefore I need to get the contract.
COPCA doesn't say that. There's no, nothing in COPCA that says we have to use any of the contractors on a pre-qualified list.
Okay.
And as I understand it, Larry, this resolution we're going to pass tonight puts the district under COPCA, which says we can do purchasing and contracts in a different way, with higher dollar limits, without that lengthy process of, but it doesn't at all change what this Board's authority is.
No, that's absolutely correct.
It changed the district's authority, but unless we change policy that we already have on the books, the contracts that this district enters into have to be approved by this Board.
Absolutely.
That's correct.
And if we've got a specialty contract and only one contractor, you can better believe this Board is going to say, we need more than one bid. We're going to have to go out on a formal advertisement and get it, or else we're going to have to pre-qualify some other bidders. So if we pass this, I think then, the next step to that is bringing back the policies that say what dollar limits we have in place now, and review those to see if the Board wants to change them.
There's one other, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There's one other section to COPCA, which is called the force account. Force account is a process by the State of California where districts can do contracted work in-house based on enrollment. So we have under $15,000 enrollment, so our limit is 350 man hours or $7,500 project value. COPCA raises that to the $45,000 limit, which means now, we can do work in-house up to $45,000 project value. So that's another advantage.
Yeah, you're almost making my argument for me, thank you, Larry. Here's the thing that I have the most problem with, is there's certain signing authority that each person and department has that does not need to come back to review. I am extremely uncomfortable taking that dollar amount and increasing it by one and a half times. I have a big problem with that.
It doesn't do that, Rob.
Well, it takes it from 15 to 45.
It doesn't take that person's authority from 15 to 45. It takes the district's authority from 15 to 45. But the Board has not given that person authority, and unless we change policy, this won't give them the 45. The authority rests with the Board, not with the person that only has $15,000.
And I thoroughly understand.
Okay.
I get it. I don't like, I inherently do not like increasing anything that precludes the oversight of public funds. I would be the one that said, everything comes, but I know that that's not feasible. It's probably not practical as well either. I am extremely uncomfortable with this. That's my position, and there's probably very little you could do to talk me out of it.
Just for clarity, we are entertaining a motion to amend the language involved with Larry's appeal?
To pass this.
Okay, just want to be sure, because I heard Mr. Wong...
No, I'm getting clarification of what this actually means. I mean, the part, and correct me if I'm not understanding this correctly, I was trying to get things as clarified as I could within my own line of thinking. You know, I guess my mind works best with examples. So if we currently have a $15,000 limit, which we currently have, so we have a lawnmower, for example, that comes up for $20,000, right?
Ms. Wu, I'm sorry, we did not explain you clearly. This is only a part of public contract, did not apply material. So if we buy a mower...
Okay, we're going to remodel a part of our building, right? It's going to cost $20,000. In the past, what would have occurred was, you would have been required to go out and do a formal bid, and you'd have to follow all the requirements of the bid. Then we would reward the bid based on the lowest cost provider, right? And then it would come to the Board, and then we would say yea or nay, and then go from there. Under this program, since it's under $45,000, if I'm understanding correctly, the only difference is, you're not required to go out and do a formal bid, do all the newspaper ads, wait the appropriate time, wait for the appropriate responses, but instead, you could go out and go by a list of pre-qualified painters, contractors, whoever it may be. If you don't like that list, you can have people, you can add them to the pre-qualified list. Once you have a number of pre-qualified people, you would then bring that selection back to the Board. The Board still has to approve this, if I'm understanding correctly, because the Board policy says, anything over $15,000, the Board has to approve. So if you bring this back to us, and I say, you've only got two people on here, and I don't like either one of these, we can reject it regardless if they were pre-qualified, regardless of any other thing that's out there. It's the final decision, still is on the Board, the same way it would be if we, the process did not change. The only difference, and this is the critical part, the only difference is, we do not have to do the formal notice in timelines for a formal bid. Is that correct, or is there another component that is substantially different?
It's, you're basically correct. Really, the only difference is, let's just say, we have, it's a painting project, and I have three painters on my pre-qualified list. All three would bid, we would take the three bids, like the lowest bidder, who would issue a field contract, a purchase order or requisition would be generated. Before the contract is awarded, it would go to the Board with the selected contractor as well as the rejected contractors. And then, you either approve the field contractor or you don't. So that's really the only process that changes. The way we do it now, you're correct, no, under, or over $15,000, we have to go out to bid, we have to advertise, we have to do the whole process. So it's not really a way to circumvent authority, it's just only a way to save some time. The approval process is still the same, the Board's authority to monitor what's being spent is still the same, nothing changes there.
How much time are we talking about?
A month, it can be easily a month. And the problem is, the way it is now, if the prices all come in too high, let's say they exceed $50,000 state contract limit, we have to start over. Whereas COPCA helps us not have to start over.
Questions or comments before we entertain to adopt the COPCA?
Yes, I have one more, because Larry, I think you've explained that exactly the way I understand it, but there is another change, and that's in our ability to do force account work. But who does, who makes the decision that we're going to do this by force account for Or whatever number of hours, or whatever that is?
Again, we have that $15,000 threshold, so if I decide that, and it's not realistic for us to do a $15,000 project with our staff, but if I decided to do a $50,000 project, there's going to be a large purchase of materials, that's still going to have to come before the Board before we move forward.
Board's still going to have to approve going force account instead of going contract, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
If I can add, it doesn't also apply to MOT projects, it also applies to technology projects. And from my personal experience, I've used COPCA quite a bit in my past district, and I would say it saves a lot of time, at least a month, sometimes two months. It's been my practice, there's been rules where prior Board has given rules that they've always wanted to make sure that we do a minimum of three. They want to see a minimum of two bids in, so that they can at least see where the bids are. And there's been instances where, not in any one of my projects, but like, actually in the painting project, where the Board rejected the lowest bid because the second and the third lowest bid was so far off the lowest, so it seemed a little bit fishy, so they wanted to rebid it. It still gives Board oversight. I think the key, one of the key things is also prequalification. The district has to make sure they're pre-qualifying in a fair manner, and if there is, you know, someone's friend that makes it to the prequalification list, if they meet their qualifications, they're pre-qualified. There are some school districts, including a prior school district that we might want to explore, where we use a third-party administrator to take care of the prequalification process. And what they do is, anybody can apply for the prequalification process, and what the district chooses is, anybody over a score of, for example, 80 is considered pre-qualified. And it's that third-party administrator that assigns every vendor a score, so that anybody above 80 is automatically pre-qualified. So there are various ways to implement this. I would say it is a big time saver. It would be a big time saver on some of the upcoming projects that we're looking at, such as the Santa Fe Cafeteria project. And even so far as to, if we were to consider, let's say we were going to tear up the boardroom a little bit, and, you know, go into the concrete and do a $100,000 revamp of the boardroom, I know a little far-fetched, but it would allow me just to pick the pre-qualified AV vendors, invite four or five of them in, and do an informal bid process, but they would still come to the Board. an informal bid process, but they would still come to the board for approval, and you would see all the, the amounts, and it would be up to the board to choose to award or, or not award the contract.
And, and Rob, I gotta tell you, when I was discussing this with Ms. Wu and Larry, my first comment was, I gotta tell you right up front, you got a really steep hill to get me on board with this. But after they fully explained it, and I looked at it all and assured myself that the board still has full control, I think it's going to save this district a lot of time and money. And the more Larry's time we can save, the more good he can do us, so.
I would probably be more comfortable if I had the policy in front of me before, but it is not.
Oh, okay.
And so now it's a, Rob trusts me.
Well, we could always, we could always table this till the next meeting and bring that policy back.
I'd like that. I'd like to see the policy before I approved it.
Okay, sure.
The board policy or the?
The wish policy.
Board policy that governs the, the limits on what requires board approval.
I should also point out, this applies to subcontractors too. It's not, you can't, this doesn't allow bait and switch, where the contractor bids it and then he hires somebody else to do the work. The subcontractors also have to prequalify.
And, and also in, in, in order to make sure that it's independent and aware of conflict interest, and I do plan to hire outside third-party to do the prequalification purpose, so that we, we're not involved, any friends, family member, associate, any of district employee will be in the list of the prequalification. So that is my, my plans, hire a third-party organization to do the whole prequalification process.
I'd like to see all that in a policy, and, yeah, that's me.
Okay, sure, sure.
Are we moving forward on the resolution to adopt, or we're going to?
I'll make a motion that we table this until the next meeting and bring that, rest of that information that we need.
Thank you.
Do you want us, somebody want a second? We need to pass that, or we just?
Please do.
Just pull it. Agree to pull it.
Agreed. Moving forward, we're dealing with item nine, memorandum of understanding between Monroe and Unified in the Gulu District, Education Bureau Facility, Jinsing Education Service for International Exchange. Ms. Wu, please.
Yes. Good evening, board again. The Gulu District is one of the best school districts located in Jiangsu, China, and it has one hundred sixty-one public school campus from kindergarten to high school, including one specialized career tech center with over ninety-five thousand students. This side of the number of students enrollment, according to the California Sunset Day Enrollment, it can be considered as the second largest public school in Los Angeles County, and the third largest schools in California. And the district delegation of four during the month of April, we visited that various high school in the Gulu District, and after we introduced our high school to the various high school, they are very interested in to establish a long-term relationship with our high school. They are very impressed by accomplishment for the MHS, and they are, in order for us to move forward, to allow us to recruit the international students from the Gulu District coming to MHS, as well as establish long-term relationship with the multiple high school in the, in that district with the Monrovia Unified School District, this MOU will allow us to move to next step. There's no legal or financial obligation for the board to enter or approve this MOU.
Questions or comments for Ms. Wu?
So move.
Ms. Huff, forgive me, Mr. Wong, Ms. Huff?
Board member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board president Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Dr. Kaiser, will you lead us with the human resource effort regarding Monroe Unified School Calendar for the 2018-19, 2019-20 school year?
Yes, Board President Williams and board, we have a recommendation that the Board of Education has requested to approve the calendars for the 2018-19 and 2019-20 school years. The Monrovia Teachers Association, California School Employees Association, and the district agreed to the proposal of the 2018-19 and 2019-20 school calendars, and it is now being presented to the Board of Education for final approval.
Questions or comments for Dr. Kaiser?
One comment, I'd like to thank the parties involved for putting a two-year calendar together. It is so much nicer and easier for our families to be able to plan.
Thank you, and that's been under the direction of, of Dar, Dr. Darvin Jackson.
And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
One second.
Thank you.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board president Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators, Dr. Kaiser?
The Board of Education has requested to adopt the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators for the 2018-2019 school year.
Questions or comments, please?
So move. Second.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board president Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Ms. Huff. Item twelve, consider, forgive me?
Okay, in the matter regarding case number one seven one eight dash one four, student ID number one one one, one one zero four four one, I move not to expel student one one one, one one zero four four one.
Second.
Ms. Huff?
Board member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board president Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Item thirteen, pending board issues, Dr. Terocian?
I, uh...
Oh, wait, she had a comment.
I'm sorry.
Oh, forgive me.
I don't wish to be out of order. Now's the perfect time.
Forgive my oversight.
No, it's been a long day. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, for the, for the first time in two and a half months since, finally came through, and thank you so much. I prepared this statement with the full expectation that you were going to expel him. So I'm going to on-the-fly attempt to edit. And to the board, to the administration, but most importantly, to the citizens of Monrovia and the students and parents we work for, I respectfully make the following statement. When frightening events happen at schools, it is the job of teachers and administration to protect, to reassure, and to take action. As a teacher, I do that. It is the job of teachers and administration to then find out what happened so that it doesn't happen again. It is our job to search for the truth, our job is justice. But there are times, and this incident is one of them, where those in charge did not search for the truth and did not achieve justice until this moment. And that is when the students in our care become disillusioned with the adults who are supposed to be doing the right thing. There are rules about this process called the California Education Code. When it is followed, it mostly works, but when it is not followed, and it had not been in this case, it doesn't work. I have worked in this district for seventeen years, my husband for nineteen, both of our sons have gone to school here for all of their school careers, we have one senior who is graduating, and it's a nice place to be, usually. But the way that this administration is running this district in many areas is unacceptable. This is not your district, this is the district of the people of Monrovia, the taxpayers, those whose address is within district boundaries, the families that make their home here for a short time or for a lifetime. Administrators serve at the pleasure of the board, but the board, you also serve at the pleasure of the people. And as one of your constituents, my husband, myself, and all of the people who came here tonight to support our son, this has been a process that was a nightmare. Our son, one of the kindest and smartest students here, has been used as a pawn. He was scapegoated to show the city that whoever was tough on crime, he was vilified in documents by actions, and all over town when people stated that he was guilty even before he had a hearing. And this incident was used to make sure that nobody thought that Monrovia was, was gonna be slight on, on a, on a terrorism charge. But what was really happening was cyberbullying and identity theft. You have not expelled him, and I thank you for that. But the administration would not listen to reason, and they did not check out the stories. And he's been guilty until proven innocent since this happened. Maybe last Wednesday's hearing and Monday's letter needed to happen for us so that we understood that though we played by the rules, the administration and the panel didn't. We, especially he, needed to understand that nothing we did or said made any difference to the adults in charge. We judged him guilty from the moment this happened, and this is not the kind of model we wanna set for our students. However, you cannot actually render this decision. We worked under a cloud, we tried to figure out the system which we'd really never been involved in, and yesterday afternoon, after someone told me that I could make it all go away for him, I turned in paperwork on behalf of him. He is not currently a student at MUSD. He withdrew yesterday, and he cannot be the student of two different high schools at the same time in California. Because you have finally rendered a verdict that is appropriate, it will be up to him to decide what he wishes to do, and I don't know what that's going to be. When this first happened, all he wanted to do was go back to his school and see his friends, and be in his classes, and be in his drama, and, and now I don't know what he's gonna choose. The supporters, however, of us and of him and of this district needed their day in court, they needed a chance to have you listen. You showed them what their opinions meant to this body, and I so appreciate that because you listened, and you heard what we had to say, and you looked at the face of my son. As far as myself and our family, I promise a few things to you, but more importantly, to my students and to the people of this community. I will not use Google Classroom, and I will encourage every person I know, every teacher and every person who ever uses it, that I will not use it until the shocking security threat to all of our students is fixed. They all need to be guided as to how to change their passwords to something of their own choosing, and this needs to be done before the end of the school year. I realize how short of time we are, I realize how close we are to the end, and I realize that there may be one or two schools who I've noticed on the data is graduating very, very soon, but however, this has to be done, and it has to be done immediately. We cannot wait. We cannot wait. Because in this whole hellish experience, I had to look at why I was actually grateful. Cyberbullying is a horrendous event in the lives of students, and we have far too many of them who are taking their own lives. My son is too confident and too stubborn to do that. However, we have opened up our students to this as an issue, and we need to be so, 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 so careful with them. I also further will say that we need to help him to feel no longer isolated, and that his reputation needs to be rehabilitated, and I don't know how that's gonna happen. He's been sullied all over town for two and a half months. I also promise you and the people of Monrovia, I will continue to work every clue, every suggestion, and every idea as to what really occurred on Friday, March the second. I do it for my child, but I also do it for yours. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Pending board issues, Dr. Terocian?
There are no new updates.
Old business, which includes the regular business, our regular Board of Education meeting will be on the thirteenth, our joint city board meeting in City Hall is June twentieth, regular Board of Education will be on the twenty-seventh of June and the twenty-fifth of July. New business, open house at Santa Fe on May twenty-fourth at six P.M., Memorial Day Observation on the twenty-eighth, and of course, our promotional and graduation starts with the Monrovia Adult School Graduation at the Community Center on the thirty-first at six P.M. Walrose, Friday the first at nine. Canyon Oaks, graduation, the Community Center, June the first at six P.M. Clifton Middle School Promotions at nine A.M. on the fifth of June, and that same day, Santa Fe on the fifth of June at nine A.M. Brad Oaks on the sixth of June at eight fifteen, Mayflower on the same day at eight thirty, that same day, Monroe at eight forty-five, and of course, Plymouth at eight thirty. And we will conclude with the climax, of course, with the high school on the sixth at seven P.M. We return this meeting at nine fifty-five.